Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the July 2021 Lancaster County Planning Commission meeting. Thank everyone in attendance for joining. Thank everyone up here. And first thing on the agenda is I'd like to welcome Mr. Davenport as our newest member.
Good evening.
Representing District One. Hopefully you'll serve as long as your predecessor did. Did everyone receive the minutes from the May 20th meeting? I can't believe it's been two months. May 20th meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Does everyone, anyone have any changes or updates to the said minutes? All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
We've got no public presentations tonight, but we do have two public hearings.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your first hearing is a application for a change of zoning district classification from R1 to C1 by Malcolm Ranson. I did a little something different this time with your packets with the rezonings. I decided to put your pictures kind of into the body of the memo just so you could see the property if you're not able to get by there and look at it yourself. This property is pretty easy to see from two different public roads. And if you go to the dump site for Kilmarneck, you go by it every time. This property was, is R1. And it is on your main primary growth corridor area as you see in the memo. We have submitted adjacent property owner acknowledgement to all the adjacent property owners. We've really yet to hear any kind of feedback at all from the neighbors. And I don't have any kind of written feedback for you tonight from any of those at all. A few years ago, you guys did do a rezoning similar to this, a couple doors up where the boat repair place is, right by Tracy Lewis's. And there's a little bit of a smattering of rezoning that's happening on this corridor. I would not really call that spot zoning, but I think being that that's a main heavily traveled corridor, that's in your primary growth area, there is some precedent for rezoning there. The, as you saw in the submittal, the applicant has indicated their intended uses. I do have one thing I wanted to point out on that. The use of the property for a public, county sanctioned public facility is NA. And that's one thing that traditionally, we do try to keep any rezoning to continue to allow future use of county, you know, whether it's a school or what have you. We were, Don and I were talking about that earlier. I think there's a state code that actually requires that. I'm not sure. We're kind of reaching out to Jim on that. That may be something that you want to talk to the applicant who's here tonight about and see if he would voluntarily change that NA to leave that county sanctioned public facility. That's 8128 down there. Let me make a note of that. I actually didn't notice that until earlier today when I was looking back over it, so. But for the most part, the submittal request before you pretty much omits all of those uses except for office buildings, building, business offices and banks, and the possibility of lumber, building supply farm and home supplies. And that's all I had for you.
Brian, refresh my memory. We did the same thing with Mowbray where the septic field site was. That was not zone C1, and Mr. Mowbray came in front of us and requested that to be.
That's right, yeah.
And that's just two, three parcels down from y'all? And in addition, and again, it's just getting old, but didn't Steve Towns, when he bought that section from Jimmy, didn't he have to get?
Yes.
His site?
Yeah, you guys rezoned that as well.
That's right. They're not showing up on the map, but I knew that, I thought that they were C1 zones as well.
Right. The map change might take a while, so that, you can't see that on your GIS tonight, but yeah, you guys have done that very recently. So, so there's a trend going in that direction between, in that corridor between Irvington and Kilmarneck along Route 200, you are starting to see a conversion to some C1 uses. I think the thing that, as planners, you should watch out for is big, heavy offensive uses, I hate to use the word offensive, but big lights, things like that, lots of crazy hours of use, because you do have residential parcels to either side. Given that this applicant has conditioned these uses to pretty much omit most chances of that, it looks a whole lot better. The only thing that would make this better is to have a site plan for the site that shows exactly what they want and go ahead and go with that. But that's usually sometimes putting the cart before the horse if you're the person spending the money on the engineering for that, so. Given what you have and that it's very limited in nature, it's probably a safe rezoning, but, you know, we haven't heard anything from the adjacent property owners yet.
I was gonna ask.
In a negative light, so. That could change things, but we don't have that yet. And most of the, we have talked directly to a few and they had no comment.
What was the number for that county sanctioned one, Brian? I'm sorry.
8-1-28.
That should be, that should be it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, okay. Oh, that's why it's like faded out.
If you remember when we did the Webb's Lawn Service rezoning, that came up. Yeah, so. That's something I think that you should, you know, we should probably always try to make sure is remaining in there.
No, I couldn't see because it faded out a little bit. Okay, perfect. You guys have any other questions for Brian before we talk to that? Would you guys like to come forward and kind of tell us a little bit about what's going on, or?
Drew Ranson, I represent Mal. So we had a fire at the house, I think back in April. We don't have any plans yet because we're currently dealing with insurance, trying to negotiate basically a rebuild for an office and basically get the money. So we're trying to get quotes right now, but yeah, we're just basically build a commercial office, you know, building just where we will have Ranson's Nursery kind of out front a little bit more.
And I know y'all are aware, but residential's no longer be allowed for that particular building if you went up and tried to have a residential component above it, or you're aware of that?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that's fine, yeah. We're just putting in offices, yeah.
And then maybe some showcasing of nursery or whatever? I mean, it makes sense.
Basically, it's just gonna be a building. Everything we have is kind of in the back where we're at right now. So really, it's just gonna be an office building for the most part.
Are you gonna put in, try to access it right from 200, just out of curiosity?
I don't know. Probably not. It would probably be better to access it off of the.
White Pine Drive.
Yeah, White Pine Drive. It'd be easier for us.
You were gonna call it Dump Road, weren't you?
Dump Road, yeah. Yeah. No, I don't think we would access it off 200, but we don't have any plans. But in my mind, it would be off the White Pine Drive.
Do y'all have any problem with what Brian suggests as far as allowing a public sanctioned facility, not scratching it from the.
I'll show you where.
Proposed uses?
Yeah, I was, we were confused on what that was pertaining to. It's just saying in the future they.
Yeah, it's.
Nothing that should hurt.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, it's 8-1-28, county sanctioned public facility.
Yeah, no, that, we can scratch that, that's fine, yeah.
Or allow it.
Yeah, we allow, yeah, yeah.
We're not allowed by law to tell you what your proffers will be, so it's a, it's a blurry line, but basically the county generally wants to see that remain as a use. And I'll take the blame for that. I should have, when we were talking about that a few months ago, I should have, I should have mentioned that.
Yeah, no, we would allow that, that'd be fine.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah. So this office building you're talking about is an office building for your business?
Yes.
And not a?
Yeah, there would be no rental to anyone else. It would just be for Ranson's Nursery and house our, you know, office staff.
Glenn, you got any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Ranson.
Thank you.
Well, it is in the PGA area. I don't feel it's a spot zoning, do y'all?
No, I'm good with that.
Like I said, you will be abstaining, correct?
Yes, I like it in the minutes that I'm gonna abstain due to a business relationship I have with Ranson's Nursery.
Did you get that, Crystal? Okay.
I'm a little leery of this sort of thing in an area that has so much residential. In fact, I voted against the last one we had for that reason. However, I don't hear any sentiment from any neighbors that they don't like the idea, so I'm gonna go along with proposing.
Would you like to make a motion, Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the Ranson parcel on tax map 28-27 from residential general to C1 commercial. It's a parcel containing 12.196 acres.
Thank you, Dave. We've got a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Fast. You guys are more than welcome to stick around for the entire meeting if you like.
No, won't do.
Okay. Thank you, guys, and y'all. We've got a second application for a change of zoning. This one goes from an M1 down to an R1, presented to us by H3O Investments LLC. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request comes to you from H30 Investments LLC. This property owner, some of you may know, is Hyder Harris. This property, I've been speaking with the listing agent for about a year about this property, and I expected this to come actually a little bit before now. This property's been, has been listed for sale for quite some time. And of course, as we have typically seen, especially lately, many of the potential purchasers would like to establish a residence on the parcel and not use it for seafood or other waterfront industrial uses. I've been very clear with potential purchasers and with the listing agent and purchase agents that the property would definitely have to be rezoned R1 for anybody to get a building permit to establish a residence there. That being said, it did take quite a while. I think they did do some diligence and try to market it to people who might want to purchase it to use for a marina or something like that, but that just has not, it just has not happened. And as you guys know, the market right now is very skewed towards the single-family residence and very hot, as they say. So with that, Jim Breeden actually brought this to me about a month ago, and he is not here tonight. I just checked with Glenn to see if he's online. I called him today and left him a message to try to make sure he'd be here. Not sure, hopefully everything's okay. So we may just have what we have, and you guys can discuss it based on that. I did a similar thing with this memo that I did with the Ransons memo. I attached photos of the subject property for you. Just in case you didn't get to go by it or see it or have some familiarity with the site. This site was long used by another Kellum, not the Kellums who run Kellum Oyster, but a cousin. And I think it was a three or four-hole shucking shed, and you see on that second page, that little, little house, it's got the shucking pads in it, and they're still intact if you dared look inside there and brave the snakes. So there was a, the person lived up on top of the hill, there was a dwelling structure there, it was torn down about two years ago. I think they got the demo permit for that. So it's traditionally been used for seafood uses and was zoned M1. The hurdle with this is, as we've dealt with before with some of these waterfront rezonings, is it from M1s to R1s, even though it's technically a down zoning, it still represents the possibility of seafood processing capacity being lost, or the possibility of a little marina being lost, or a boat building place, a place where people could work and make money. So that's, that's not an easy decision to make, because although residential housing is something we need, and somebody could, it's a great view, as you can see from my last picture there, that's a pretty nice view. One, and I told Mr. Breeden, especially when they get to the board level on this, they really need to make the case that the requirements for processing shellfish now are so high with lots of high-pressure water, lots of septic system. Can this land here in this spot handle that? Could they, do they have room to build a big high-capacity septic system out there given the kind of soil you have in Weems? I don't know. The septic system that's approved for this site now is very limited, I will tell you that. And whoever buys it, even for residential dwelling, is gonna have some big hurdles to get over for building and Bay Act site plans and all that. So it's not an easy win, even if the R1 sailed through. The other thing we've got to think about is what I highlighted for you in the memo, is one of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan is to create a public boat ramp site on Carter Creek. That's probably a lower priority site now for us compared to fishing piers in other areas of the county. That said, if one came along in this area, I'm sure the county would like to do it. We have some boat ramps on Carter Creek now, but they are, they are not necessarily public facilities, they're private for public access, but they could be gone tomorrow. So that's something to think about. Would this site work for a public boat ramp on Carter Creek? It's pretty deep there. It gets very deep. I don't have any pictures for you when you stand on the little wharf area here, but it drops off pretty quickly into a deep stem of the creek. But the site is pretty tricky, it's pretty limited, it's pretty hilly and bumpy, and it's, it's a limited site for that. But that's something you guys may want to discuss here in public meeting. The other concerns are involving, and actually kind of to the credit of this request, is that when you look at that third and last picture in the memo, you're kind of facing out towards the mouth of Carter Creek, towards the Rappahannock River. On the left is Carter Cove Marina, Kellum's Oyster, and then Ampro. So you have all M1 zone properties, and they're all being used for those seafood or working waterfront M1 uses right now. You can't see it in this picture, but immediately to the right, as I stood there taking that picture, is an R1, single-family residence, single-family. And the rest of the whole stem of that end of Carter Cove is all residential. So just like that last request where they're kind of on the edge of a growing area, this is on the edge of residential and industrial. So it's not a spot, in my opinion, because it's immediately bordering an R1 on one side and M1 on the other, so. So for it to blend over just one tick is not a big deal. But it is something to think about. I think it's something to consider, and I think a lot of these M1s to R1s, they're happening fast, and you more than likely have one coming for your August meeting. I just want to make sure we're consistent, that we kind of deliberate on each one. As we say in the site plan world, when we look at site plans and people say, oh, well you approved his pool, but you didn't approve mine, well, we always say, each site stands and fails on its own merits. Well, I think rezonings are similar, because no two pieces of land are exactly alike. But there's gonna come a day, I think, where somebody's gonna have an M1 site, they're gonna want to drop it down to R1, and I think the county's gonna say no. And I just want to kind of lay the groundwork for us giving them all a good thorough looking over and consideration, and then when that one comes along where the county really needs to keep it as an M1 for, either for seafood access or for public access, that we're able to adjust as we go. But right now, the real estate market being so aggressive as it is, is very hard for these little sites to withstand the potential buying pressure that they're getting. That's all I had.
Are you guys the owner's representatives? Are you?
No.
Okay. So we don't have a?
No, we don't. No, they, we mailed them and called them.
I don't know, you mentioned his name, but I don't, I don't recognize the owner's name. Maybe you can answer this then, if I may. It was purchased in 2010, according to the county documents, for $549,700. It was owned M1 then, correct?
Correct, yes.
What was missed, what was their plan then? Do you even know?
From what I've been able to ascertain, the idea was to establish a small marina there, kind of like a little boutique marina. I will tell you guys, and some of you know this, the, for a long, long time, VMRC, Virginia Marine Resources Commission, never, never required royalties for the bottom that was being used, public bottom, even though it's kind of private bottom there. I think there's still some royalties that are involved with docks. There was some discussion at that time in 2010 that getting the marina permitted the way they wanted with the private bottom and the VMRC royalties was gonna be too expensive. I think also the, although 2010 was after the 2008 crisis, I just don't think the economics worked out for that. You know, I will say that I don't know, I do not know personally the contract purchaser now, or if there is one, but I have spoken to many potential purchasers of this property, and all of them have just expressed only interest in establishing a single-family residence on it.
How many could be built there, Brian? I know by right, it could be at least two.
It could be two lots. It could be, I think they have the area possibly to do two lots. I don't think it would necessarily be two waterfront lots. I'm not sure if there's enough linear waterfrontage there to quite get that second lot, but you could have a landward lot. The other thing, and I'll be completely honest with you guys, this is no secret, the way the Bay Act works is that if you have a previously constructed, you look at that picture of that little oyster house there, that on one corner, it's only about 27 feet from the corner of that oyster house into the creek. By right, they can tear that down and they can build a pool there with an attached house, and all it takes is a site plan and money, but they then have the authorization to do things that you just aren't allowed to do anymore. And I think that is quite frankly attracting a certain buyer who has good architects behind him or her and has the money and wants to build a house that, you know, you would see on the cover of a magazine like that with a pool right there, and that little shed, and all those outbuildings could be combined into one big house on that lot. And the two rules we go by is area and square footage and point of closest encroachment. So if your point of closest encroachment now is 30 feet, if you are willing to move it back to say 34 feet, and say it was 2,000 square feet of oyster house, you build 2,000 square feet of pool and house and go up three stories, it meets the Bay Act requirements. So there are people that are looking for that now and kind of looking at these kind of sites. That is happening.
Thank you.
Not sure if that's what's going on here, but that's, that makes these sites more attractive now for houses, now that people know they can do that.
I get it, yeah. Thank you, that was a great explanation.
Brian, you know, we've been hurt together looking, looking around. I know where this is at, but I haven't, you know, walked on it or anything like that. In your opinion, that won't meet what we've been trying to find.
I don't, I don't think so. It's hard to tell from here, but that hill kind of creates a knoll, and it drops pretty aggressively down into the creek. The lot is very narrow. If we were to have, we would need a parking area, you'd need a big turnaround. I think by the time you put that parking turnaround radius in, you're really jamming up on neighbors on either side and.
Yeah, I know it was narrow, and like I said, I've driven down and then, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, but I think, like I said earlier, I think every site deserves a good going over and a good consideration for, like you said, it was M1 when they purchased it.
No surprises.
Yeah, it's.
Here's my heartburn, if I may. Once it's gone, it's gone. You know, and we've started down a slippery slope. That one on John's Neck didn't give me too much heartburn because it was a postage stamp with absolutely no septic capacity, but, you know, again, if it's an opportunity, you know, possibly for the public, if that makes any sense, and not just exclusively, you know, private, like all of our waterfront is getting, I don't know. This one's just given me a lot of heartburn. And I get it, I get nobody probably wants to buy it for where it is, it's probably not, you know, cost prohibitive, but, you know, are they gonna get that much money for residential site? Probably so, with the. Probably so, with the footage in there, I mean, with the grandfather footprints in there. But, you know, they've had it for 11 years, and it's been zoned M1 since we had zoning. I don't know, I'm struggling. What do you guys think?
I think the limiting factor on this parcel, because I've been down to that parcel several times, and I used to keep my boat down at Carter's Cove Marina, which is right next door. But for public access, that road is tiny.
It is tiny.
It is. You just couldn't, you can't really have trailers going down that road. You can't, just in a regular car, if you happen to get somebody coming the other way, somebody would have to fit a wheel in the dirt to get by. I think that's a strong limiting factor unless the county, you know, if it was a county access spot, they would have to improve the whole road leading down there. There's just no way around that, in my opinion.
Are you seeing that for like boat trailers or just cars in general?
For both, really. I mean, if it was going to be kind of someplace where county residents could go, you know, you'd get a lot more traffic on that road, which that road does end at Carter's Cove Marina, and Carter's Cove Marina has whatever, 40 slips, but, you know, a boat marina just, that is not public access, you've got to be an owner, you know, it doesn't get that much traffic really on a daily basis. I get it. So I think that's a limiting factor, that the hope of keeping it M1 might be a pipe dream. Now, there's other M1 properties out there that I think there's great access, road access, that I think would make a better site for the county. But I agree with you that it's a slippery slope when you rezone working waterfront to something different.
Because you'll never get it back. Once it turns residential somewhere by, that's it.
Yeah, I agree. Brian, you mentioned another one coming in August. Can you give us a little insight on that?
Yeah, yeah, I can, because, and I can tell you because it has actually been applied for, so I think we can openly discuss anything that's foible. And that'll be the old WF Morgan Seafood at the very end of John's Neck Road.
So you can see that from this site.
Which is immediately adjacent to Jimmy and Sook that we recently heard as a rezoning.
It's not next to this site.
But you can see that, you see that?
Yeah, and it's at the very end, so when you, the little crab shack you all heard back in May?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is at the very end, all that land at the very end of the road.
Oh, way, way over, yeah, across the water.
Yeah, yeah, not, not, it's right down the John's Neck Road.
Yeah, and this is off of John's Neck, but this is, you've got to turn off John's Neck down a little tiny road.
Either get to this.
And make three or four turns to get back to this one that we're talking about tonight. But that one is a straight shot. I mean, it ends at John's Neck.
Big, wide, curbing gutter road that runs right into it.
Big, big road, no issue with access.
Yeah, it's...
But I can see if we do this one, yes, and then that guy comes and we say no.
Yeah, I think it's, I think, yeah, I think it's definitely time to have that discussion, because this is going on. And, you know, I reach out every once in a while to people in the seafood community and stuff, and one guy said to me back in May, when we were looking at Jimmy and Sook, and I talked to some of the guys who used to work out of that old one, just to get a feel for the history of the place. And he said, Brian, what would happen if my buddies and I applied to rezone 10 acres of land on Carter Creek that's R1 now to make it M1, so that we could have a shucking house and upwellers and do oyster agriculture? And I said, well, I don't, I think...
That's a good question. If we do rezone this, can we rezone it back?
Could you rezone, yeah. And, you know...
But you don't think we would go with that, or the neighbors would go with that?
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, there's nothing to say...
In this business, it's hard to predict how things are going to be perceived. And it's almost like part of me wants to say, for every one of these seafood M1s that's downzoned to R1, we should almost like put something in a bank, like here's an acre, two acres, four acres, and say, all right, well, if somebody in the future needs, say seafood expands greatly, or the need for...
Talking like New Jersey Credit Bank, we'll do it M1 zoning bank.
Yeah, now we're going to come back and say, hey, remember 10 years ago, we drop zone these to accommodate development? Well, now we've got a big parcel here on the water that somebody really wants to do an aquaculture situation. Here you go.
You're running a man toy, what do you think?
But it's tough.
Are you all at full capacity? I mean, is there...
Not right yet, but we're close.
Is it plausible to say, if we keep on where we're going, we might need extra stuff?
I think that we should hold on, you should hold on to the stuff that you already have. No, I don't think you should change it. I mean, you can almost build a house anywhere, but you can't get back to old stuff that's grandfathered in.
I agree.
You know? You can't.
And to further that, you mentioned it with Mao, we kind of knew what Mao was going to do, but, I mean, they're not here to really, to talk to us about it. We've not seen a site plan. I think if it ever was in a situation for a site plan, here Charlie. Did you have, did you?
Is the public hearing open?
I just thought you wanted to ask a question.
Well, it's for a public hearing. The same thing in both cases?
Let me...
If you didn't ask for a public hearing, can you open it for public hearing on...
Yeah, well then, all right, just hold your question, and when I open it up, I'll let you talk. So where were we?
Let me first of all compliment Brian on a very thorough background discussion of this whole area, bringing out all the pertinent factors for us. As far as my thoughts on whether we should pursue this for public access, my feeling is that, you know, we have quite a few boat-launching sites. And really, a site on Carter's Creek, I mean, you can't use it as a place for swimming, or it's kind of busy for fishing, and many of the other things that we need more of. So, and the price, you know, if we end up paying, do you know what the asking price is for this parcel?
No, sir, I do not.
But it's probably over, in excess of half a million?
Probably, yeah. The tax assessed value is certainly more than that.
So it's not an inexpensive piece of property, if the county were to buy it. In my view, we have a piece of property right now that apparently we've kind of decided not to utilize as a place to build a new school, 150-acre parcel. We didn't pay a whole lot more than that for that parcel. And it seems to me that its location at the end of the Corotoman River is very much better for a fishing pier, maybe a swimming beach.
Not if you're talking about Good Luck Road property.
Yeah.
If you're talking about the property of Good Luck Road?
Yes.
No, you don't want a fishing pier.
Yes, I misspoke. I know we've talked about the lack of fish there before, but, you know, it can be used for crabbing, just a pier for people to get out on the water, plus all kinds of land for park and playgrounds and baseball fields, things that the county doesn't have, picnic facilities. I mean, the people in our county and tourists have no place to go for a picnic, or just to see the water and get out on the water. It seems to me that that might be a much better investment in parkland than a site on Carter's Creek. My thoughts.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I'm not looking at it as for potential county land, I'm just looking at kind of what Toy and I were talking about, is like, it's there now, and if we go down, we probably can't go back up. Yes, sir.
I don't see a whole lot.
Yes, I know, that's why I've got both ears open.
I have a problem sometimes with, somebody buys a piece of land, I understand they bought it M1, okay, but it's nothing on it. I have a problem with telling somebody they can't do something with what they own, because we're hoping that down the road, somebody will come in and use it for what it's worth. Having said that, being that there's an R1 right next to it, I don't have as much problem with it. The biggest problem I have with what's going on here tonight is the fact that nobody's here to talk to us. There was going to be some, they had to know there were going to be problems, or Breeden and Breeden wouldn't be involved in this. So where are these people to ask the questions that need to be asked, or answer the questions that need to be answered, right? That's my bigger problem.
Good point.
Yeah, it's a great point.
You don't have to take into action on it, right?
Well, that would be my recommendation, we don't do anything with it, because of the fact we don't have anybody to answer our questions.
Yeah.
So we just drop it or...
Yeah, you could certainly, you could certainly table it.
He's right, yeah.
Either that, or we can send it on up to the board and let them deal with it.
But you never know if there's an emergency, so I hate to...
Yeah, but that's true, we don't have to do anything.
That's right, yeah, and that's, I think I might have said that in the memo, that you don't, you can forward it on with no recommendation if you'd like. That's entirely...
I don't want to do that. I want to table it until we see possibly a site plan, or get an idea of what's going on.
Talk to somebody. I think we need to have a discussion at this level before it gets up to the next level.
Yeah, that's, I think that's very prudent, is to give somebody a chance to, something may have, may have happened, illness or whatever, I'm not sure what happened at Myers Cross. They may have been, I'd like to think that they were so surprised this came up so quickly, because when I talked to Jim about it, I said, well, I'm going to try to get it on for July 15th, okay, are you ready? And he's, he's got a lot going on, and maybe he's surprised, I don't know, but...
Well, then maybe we can get two M1 zonings down John's Neck Road back to back.
That might be, that might, that might be prudent as well, to go ahead and kind of deliberate on this.
I think a little bit more time to think about this.
Yeah.
And I suggest everybody drive down there.
Yeah, if you haven't been down, you need to, need to really...
And you're right about the road's time.
Consider the road, you know, that going in there.
Yeah, and there's houses right next to it. I mean, they share, I think the driveway that goes down is a shared driveway for the two or three houses right next to it.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I agree, I kind of, you know, same property.
Yeah, look at both properties.
Right there, shared road with other residential houses, but, you know, there's M1 on the other side, it's just, yeah, I need some, I need some more time to think about it.
Okay, yeah.
Brian, would you be able to get us the address to the other property that you're talking about as well, so we could see both of them before the next meeting?
Yes, yeah, yes, ma'am.
That's easy, just go past Ampro, just keep on, just until the road ends.
Dead end.
It's literally at the dead end.
John's Neck.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Okay.
Charlie, let's open up the public hearing. What you got, buddy?
You just took care of what I was going to say. That was my recommendation, what you're doing, table it and put the guy in here, find out people in here who want this. And while this public hearing is open, the public hearing was a ransom, we have made a recommendation to open the public hearing and close the public hearing for 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And all the rest of it is, because you didn't do it. All right, it's, okay, well, see you next month. Whatever.
He's right, you could go back and open up the public hearing, you could go in our here at 10:00.
Yeah, yeah. You're right, I got the cart and the horse on that one. But before we do that, thank you, Charlie. Anything else you have, Charlie?
No, is anybody online? Anyone?
No, because he shows us if we're online.
I think there was only one person.
We okay? Usually pops up on here if you ask somebody. We've gone high-tech. Hmm? No. Anybody else have anything you'd like to say for the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing section.
All right, I think we're kind of in agreement. We'll just table this? You want to make a recommendation, Tom, just to, till we get more information?
Yeah, just make a recommendation that we table this request to have time to further discuss it and look at the property, and hopefully, when it comes back, the owner or the owner's representative is here to ask questions, too.
Thank you. We've got a motion on the table to simply table this request for zoning change until further information is given to us. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Crystal, yeah, Charlie, I apologize. I got my cart and the horse, but I'd like to go back, if I may, and I know the applicants are not here, but open up public hearing if anyone has any comment.
You did open it up. You opened it up right before you were...
I did?
You never closed it.
You did close it, but you did open it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments regarding that zoning change?
I think it's important.
Yeah, all right. If nothing further for that, I'd like to close that public hearing section. Sorry about that. See, you take off a month, you get rusty for guys.
Sorry.
I'd like to say it's because I've been on vacation, but that's not the case. Okay. That does it for our public hearing section. Next up on our agenda is a consideration item, Chapter 6 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chapter 6, okay, we're moving along with Chapter 6, excuse me, reaching back into May. We did some things with that. You guys gave us some good suggestions to make edits, tried to go through the minutes line by line and make sure that all of your suggestions from May were addressed. And I think Dave Chup, you or Tom gave me this to add to page 6-9. I think that was Dave. I tried to put that language directly in there, as well as the other comments, to keep it from getting too complicated. As you see, and please forgive me, but I started adding a different color this time to show you your most recent highlights.
I think that was, it makes...
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. When it's just yellow, 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 it's, even I'm getting confused, okay, was that yellow from May, or is that the most recent?
I think it's a great idea.
So I'll just go from the top like I normally do from, in chronological order, or, I'm sorry, page order. 6-2, tie, last meeting, you had suggested that I did not have the most recent data on the average daily traffic for the roads, so there you see those in kind of that teal blue color, hopefully edited correctly. And we don't have any other new edits until we get to page...
It's kind of interesting to see that actually went down.
Yeah, I'm very surprised by the traffic count going down. That doesn't seem like what it seems like when you're on your way to work in the morning.
Especially trying to get through Kelmaw.
No, no. Yeah, I bet you if they did it right now, it's probably way up, but that's just me.
Yeah, that's, I think...
Coming back last night on 64, right by the turnoff, there was a New York Tags car and a New Jersey Tags car behind me when I turned off. They followed me all through Gloucester. When I turned off in Gloucester, they were still behind me, going through Matthews, and then Jenny said, my wife said, I'll bet you they'll follow us across the bridge. I said, yep, sure enough, here they come. So there's...
Road rage?
No, no, they were, no, I think they were coming here for the weekend or whatever, so.
They were after you.
Anyway, 6-7, some of your page numbers are changing, because as we add edits, it pushes your page numbers around, but that'll, that'll flex a little bit. Right now, it's in your packet as 6-7. The public boat landing at Wendell Point, we added that since May, and I tried to put that blurb in there. Lancaster High School, Tara, I think that was something you had mentioned, that it previously said has the most complete facilities, which is a bit erroneous. Take a look at what we've edited there, hopefully that is a little more reflective of the reality there. It does have a football stadium and a gymnasium and athletic field, singular, but not really...
Can I jump in here?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Or do you want me to wait to come back later? So the only thing I was going to suggest is, in that paragraph that starts, the one you were just talking about, Lancaster High School features a large gymnasium. I was going to say, basically strike the rest of it, and after gymnasium, put, and outdoor stadium for football and soccer.
Oh, okay, all right, so strike, a large gymnasium, and... Oh, okay, all right, so strike, a large gymnasium and...
Outdoor stadium for football and soccer.
Okay. For football and football. As the English call it.
That's with a U though, right?
Yeah. Okay, and then Lancaster Middle School, there again, we struck, uh, accommodate softball, baseball and other outdoor sports. Has a gymnasium and a complete and well-equipped auditorium and outside playgrounds. Is it a complete and well-equipped auditorium? It seems to be.
I would say yes.
Yeah, I think it's pretty good, but, um...
Do we, no sense of putting the fact that it serves as a, as a, um, shelter. Should we add that? I mean...
Do you want to mention that or...
It's at least a place, it's a shelter.
It is a shelter.
The middle school?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a shelter.
One of the few, right?
One of...
I was trying to think of another one.
Upper Lancaster?
There's one somewhere up here.
So do you think?
An apartment.
And, and, uh, so Lancaster Middle School has a gymnasium, comma, a complete and well-equipped auditorium and outside playgrounds, period, and also serves as a storm shelter or...
Is it county, it's county sanctioned storm shelter?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I have always dodged that duty, so I've never had to go down there and, and work the shelter, but I think Crystal has before. Okay. I've always had too many animals to watch. Okay, the, the next one, Lancaster Primary School, there again, we, we just, um, we just struck that accommodate further development. Um, I don't know, I, I've talked with, uh, the superintendent of schools about this. The future plans for the primary school, it may be premature to put that in, in the comp plan because it seems to be so...
I wouldn't say anything.
Okay, okay. So, do you got, are you guys okay with that edit there for, for now with the primary school?
So can I jump in again?
Yes, ma'am.
So just because I had something on six, six, and Bill...
Oh, okay.
How do you know, you're working at a school?
Thirty years, that's all. So you just said something about not putting in something about what might happen in the future, and I had put a big question mark on this whole thing about the triway trail. Like, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but it's not a done deal, and I have a little bit of anxiety about putting it in our comprehensive plan. Like, there are lots of things we've talked about along the way, but we don't go describing them in our comprehensive plan before they're done. So I just felt like I needed to throw that out there and...
That was your rendition last time, Tara?
I think it's good now. Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, we would want some trails, you know, we want more trails, and that's what this plan is, just to say that we're, we're in favor of more recreational things for the county residents to take upon, but, yeah, it's not done, it's not...
Well, I think that top paragraph says propose, and maybe we should have left, left, left that as is, you know, because it says propose without getting into...
All the details.
Those details.
The second and third paragraph?
Yeah, especially the second. Maybe we should have just...
Strike, striking the second, third, you?
Yeah.
You know, but that, that does say propose now part five and maybe, you know, and just leave it like that.
Yeah, I agree. However, um, the sentence viewed by residents as a flagship initiative for the region, that's, that's a little much, I think.
I agree.
I, I would change that to as a flagship tr- trail initiative.
Why don't we just take out viewed by residents all and just start with the triway as a proposed trail?
Yes, I would take out the whole part.
Yeah, okay.
From viewed to the comma.
Sorry, Jimmy.
Okay, so repeat that last thing again. You would take, you would leave in a new opportunity exists with the proposal of the trail connecting Kilmarnock Irvington and Whitestone, period.
And then take out viewed by residents as a flagship initiative for the region and then just start that sentence with the triway trail.
Okay.
And then, yeah, delete the second and third paragraph.
And then delete the second and, okay. All right, let me try that.
Thanks, Tara.
Okay, uh, six dash seven, we covered that. Uh, six dash eight, um, I believe, Tom, you had mentioned last month about Golden Eagle Golf Course and Restaurant should be listed with the privately owned facilities. Hopefully we've captured that here, um...
In six dash nine, you talk about Golden Eagle, the location. Why don't you put the two together?
Say that again, Charlie, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, yeah, I do, we do...
Six dash eight, you just said it called the Golden Eagle, about where it is. That shows up on six dash nine.
Yeah.
Just put the two together.
I, you know, I noticed that. I went back and forth on that, back and forth. I was like, ah. The, the comp plan does that over and over and over again, chapter after chapter mentions the same things over and over again, and it's like, well, should... Okay.
And you can combine the two and as one, yeah.
And put it under B.
Because it's both, both very descriptive on both.
So do you want to leave it under privately owned facilities and strike it from other facilities?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Just remove that sentence or two sentences over.
And then move to... That way, the mention of it under privately owned facilities will not be one sentence, it'll then be two and a little more complete. Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so while we're on that, now we're on six nine, like Charlie mentioned, um, there's some blue edits there. Lancaster County, uh, has access, we, there again, we, I think we were all in agreement that that was a little more a little too, uh, aggressive in its statement, a little too rosy of a picture. We have tried to, with, with some of these little edits here, just bring it a little more into reality, uh, and then the last sentence down, um, an enhancement of the quality of life for citizens and visitors. The county is making and should continue to make efforts to acquire more public access sites. Uh, I don't know how you all feel about that or if that needs further tweaking. That's fine.
I like it.
I think you did great.
Okay. Six ten, we changed intermediate to middle school. And I think we have a couple little pages here where we've made some minor edits. Uh, six dash fourteen, uh, Tom, thank you, yeah. Historic Christchurch Museum is now listed in the museums, and, um, really, sorry that that was not previously mentioned because that's a pretty good, good little thing now. Uh, six dash seventeen, the Northern Neck Free Health Clinic in Kilmarnock also provides pharmacy services.
Back on six thirteen, uh, we talk about, uh, mill ponds, and we say the county will adopt regulations and policies to control the type of development permitted. I don't know that we're anywhere near adopting any such regulations and policies. Maybe we should change adopt to the county will need to consider.
Yeah, how do you all...
Or may need to consider. You know, I, I've seen this in there for probably ten years.
And it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah.
Yes, um, there, there has, you, and you're right, uh, and we talked about this with your potable water chapter, uh, a great deal. And I remember Bob Smart was really keen to know that, of course, he worked in the Navy and, uh, aircraft carriers make their own water while they're at sea, so he's, he's very well familiar with, uh, the needs of drinking water, six thousand guys and girls living on a little tiny ship, but, um, yeah, I, I... Just as your staff person, I like a language like may need to consider because it does leave the door open, and then when the board directs staff to begin developing an ordinance to create an overlay near one of these mill ponds that are needed for water, it's easier, it's an easier ask, um, because you can just say, oh, it's in the comp plan, but, um, yeah, just saying the county will adopt regulations, um... That sounds, sounds like that was from a, a much earlier time in the history of the comp plan where that was a really hot topic for a while, and I don't think that that's as, as a pressing need now. All right, I'll try to, I'll try to make that correction for next month if you want.
On, uh, six fifteen, down at the bottom, talk about, uh, developing a historic overlay district for Lancaster Courthouse, and we say Lancaster County will develop boundaries and designate Lancaster Courthouse Village as a historic overlay district. You know, we, we pursued that in the past, it never got anywhere. Are we ready for a, a retry at that? I don't think so. Or at least, I haven't heard of any such effort.
Yeah, honestly, on the staff level, I, we have not heard anything new on that front. We don't even have enough staff people or, uh, appointees right now to fill our HRC needs. And of course, with the new zoning official on, on who's, who's pretty much up to speed now, he's getting ready to take on the HRC and try to help get that back up to speed. Um, you, you, it was during your time, Dave, um, I know there was an attempt to make a rural village overlay for Lancaster, and that, that met with some opposition, I know, and Tara, you were here then as well. I think the rural, rural village overlay concept is one that's not well-understood. When I look at the rules and stuff in the rural village overlay, it's really neat, for lack of a better word, and, um, I would want that if I had a house or something over here. I think it's, it's pretty, pretty interesting, but, um, and I would love, personally love to see this main drive, when you come up the hill here, really, from here to the gas station, really is in need of, of some sprucing up. It's getting pretty nice. The church does a great job. There's some new, new owners of these properties here, but, um, something like that might help. Uh, the problem, I think you're finding, and you guys are probably familiar with this, nowadays historic overlays have gotten a bad rap because people think, and this is what we hear from citizens when they come in, sometimes potential buyer, oh, I don't want to buy something that's on the historic register, then I can't add on, and I can't do this. And people might have that perception of a historic overlay, so, um, I don't know, I think you're gonna run, we're gonna run into headwinds with that.
I'm not against doing this, but, uh, unless we really intend to, to designate, uh, the village as a historic overlay district, I think we should at least condition that we, the county may consider designating or...
Do you want to make that like we did before, instead of Lancaster County will develop boundaries, uh, Lancaster County should consider development of boundaries and designate and possible, want to make it a little more?
Yeah.
Should or may or consider?
It's not like we've got to do it. We're on it.
Well, I can make that change next month, and if you like it, you could maybe recommend that, and if not, we'll tweak it a little more. I think it's a good thing to do. I think most people would agree with that, but the actual doing of it is, is a little more tricky than, than just make it happen.
Good catches, Dave. You got anything else?
No.
Where are you, Brian?
Okay, uh, pharmacy, and I think the last big one you have is right at the very end. Uh, we, thank you, Mr. Lee, you reached out to the broadband people and they responded with, uh, some language for you to look at, and so we put that in here at the very end, uh, a new, another new section for the comp plan, uh, regarding broadband internet service as one of the infrastructure features of the county, uh, which I think is pretty cool. Um, this language actually came directly from Cassie with, uh, with the broadband authority. It's language they came up with. I didn't do this. I, I barely know how to spell broadband, so, um, thankfully they do great, great work with what they do.
So I get a fair number of questions from people who know I'm on the planning commission and assume I have some idea when broadband will be implemented in our county. I, I've had no idea, and I tell them that. Now, this says that, uh, the county anticipates having fiber-based broadband available to unserved residents the third quarter of twenty twenty-four. That's three years from now. Is that, is that what we're telling people?
Yeah, that's what we tell them.
We, I don't think we are telling them. I mean, there's an article in the paper today...
I, I read that.
That gives them really no idea when we'll have it.
Yeah, I read that, and I said, this, you know, this is not...
Completely confusing.
When, when APB came to us, you know, they saying something different, that's why, that's how we got this date, the twentieth, you know, this year, but in the paper, it doesn't say that.
No.
It kind of leaves it open, you know, it's, it's open, and, and I said, why didn't he just say the same thing he said to board supervisors?
And, and people are dying to know this. I went to a, uh, Waters Cove Development near where I live. I don't live in it, but, uh, they invited me to their, their annual meeting and picnic, and that was a major topic of discussion in the business part of their meeting. And people have been contacting various people to try to get some idea when broadband internet will come our way, and there were twelve different opinions on when that was gonna happen, some of which had it happening in, in three or four months. It's, I think it's mass confusion out there, and, uh, I think, uh, the newspaper is, uh, kind of at fault for, for that.
Maybe, maybe I can, uh, talk to, uh, Cass again, and maybe they can put out something in the paper. Explain exactly where we are, where we're gonna be.
I have a heartburn about this being...
I think that's probably the step to take, you know, we've, we've gone down that road before and...
Hopeful.
But let me, yeah, let me talk to her.
I kind of like it too, but I want to make sure.
This, this is...
She can come up with, uh...
This is gonna be a major disappointment, I think, to the county residents.
Yeah, well, I don't know where they could get...
And I think you should expect some blowback, uh...
It's, it, you know, six months is not realistic, so I don't why somebody would go around and say three or four months, you know, twelve months is not realistic. You talk, what we gotta do.
Yeah, I think with the broad, I, I know enough about the broadband thing to be dangerous. Don, you can ask Don about it, and he can bullet point you all the facts, um, but, but I've, just as an observer, I've noticed that the, what the broadband authority is actually doing has not well, been well and widely communicated, and some of that just has to do with information these days does not seem to get out, which is weird because technology's better than ever, but different groups of people don't always seem to be informed as well as they should be on what they need to know, so...
Well, it's taken a couple of years for them to come up with a plan. There's been some...
Yep.
They've looked at a lot of different options, and it hasn't been really a plan until, done a plan until very recently.
And you know, some, Dave, some things, some things have been done. You know, some things have been done, like the poles that we, you know, got located around.
Temporary ones?
Especially, especially the, uh, right here at the back, you know, to reach people going up toward, uh, Mary Point and up all the way. So some things have been done, and I know that the one in Kilmarnock, the pole that's located in Kilmarnock in the park, that's the one that get the most use.
Yeah. And I know for a while they were waiting for certain grants and...
Yeah.
They didn't know, they couldn't go a certain way until they knew whether that grant was gonna come through, and it's just, um, it's been, been a process, but... Yeah, i- if you guys are okay with this paragraph the way it is, um, that's fine. If you want to edit it, uh, or have more questions for Cassie that, that Mr. Lee and I could...
I don't, I don't think we, we are capable of editing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Charlie?
I would drop the dates.
I would too, so...
That's what gives you a heartburn.
I really don't think... I really don't think the comprehensive plan needs to be specific dates on when we're going to do something because it could change tomorrow.
Yep.
And all the rest of it.
Yep.
It needs to be comprehensive, it needs to be general, we're working towards it.
Twenty, 2024 certainly could change.
I agree. Just take the detail.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I like that because selfishly, as I was talking to Ms. Kearns earlier, she said, well, how long does a comp plan review normally take? And I said.
Forever. Till the next one begin.
Yeah, we've been at this for quite a while, you know, it takes as long as it takes.
While we're on that page, six dash 19, the gold is out there. So last left, waterfront W1 overlay prohibited from utility scale solar. I think that's going to go back in because the ordinance has, the gentleman ordinance.
Wait a minute, what?
Play a lot of hell.
He's talking about, right, Charlie asked me about that earlier, six dash 18 in the W1, waterfront W1, utility scale solar.
Well, I, I don't think we need, need that, Charlie, because.
Because what?
The waterfront overlay only applies to residential property, and the solar is only allowed on agricultural.
It's in the ordinance.
What, what's in the ordinance?
The, yeah, utility scale solar is prohibited from being within 800 feet of water.
That's the thing.
But, but the waterfront overlay does not apply to agricultural properties.
It's also in the application.
That's true.
That wall is part.
That's true. That's a sticky wicket, and I'm not sure, that might be a Jim question I'd have to come back to you on, because that's true, agriculture is not prohibited from the W1 overlay, the W1 overlay applies to zoning uses, so.
Only covers what is in the.
Yep. Mr. Costello, I struck those two lines just to make it a little more basic at this time. Perhaps I struck too far with that sentence, but if, if, you know, if, if you guys feel that maybe that could be, be unstruck, then that's, that's okay as well.
The other thing is about the.
Well, I, I think it's true, I mean, it's not going to do any harm to have it in there, but.
We don't.
It's in, it's in the ordinance, is all I pointed.
Yeah, and the ordinance is, we don't have all the different ordinances in the comprehensive plan, that's why we have ordinance.
Right.
Well, general, the ordinance is part of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
You do the comprehensive plan, then you.
As an aside, while, while we're talking about it, I will tell you that I've, I've been having conference calls with solar developers about once a week. A lot of them are smaller community, what we call community-scale solar guys who might want to develop a 15, 20, or 40, 50 acre site, not a mega site, but a smaller site, and.
Let's please not get on solar. Let's just, let's just stop right there. I don't want to cut you off.
All I was going to say is.
This is going down a slippery slope.
They were interested in locating in waterfront districts, and I think excluding them with the W1 is.
And let's, let's keep it struck as is, Charlie, you'll have time when we come back with the public hearing if you want to bring that up. Again, everything is, is by special exception anyway, so we don't have to be so specific. You have anything else, Mr. Barnes?
No, I just, I just made a note here to drop the dates in the broadband internet service paragraph, so July 2018, October, you know, I'll, I'll try to have that ready for you next month with those edits, if that makes that broadband section a little more, a little more consistent with the way the rest of the comp plan is written, we'll see how that goes.
Great job, Ron. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
This is going to be a small one, and I apologize, but I was just thinking, where the hell was it? If we could just add. Hold on. I swear I had something. Six dash nine.
Okay.
The top paragraph. We're discussing about the marinas.
Mm-hmm.
And Lancaster County's unique location at the mouth of the Rappahannock River and conflu, confluence of the Rappahannock and Carroton Rivers, but I'd like to, to, to add the fact that we're also on the Chesapeake Bay, which I think is a big catchphrase, and just off the intercoastal waterway. So I think that speaks volumes to marinas.
That's great.
As far as ducking in off of that coastal waterway, so. But that's all I had.
Okay, that's good. Chesapeake Bay and the intercoastal waterway.
Yes.
Do you have a lot of folks stop here on their way up and down?
They, they do, they really do.
Okay. All right.
It's coming together. You guys have anything more to add to the extraordinary signs? Brian, are you all good with what we've come up with?
Yes, sir, yeah. I think I've got it all, and thankfully, Crystal will make sure I get the rest.
All right, you sort of alluded to number six and other business, we've got another rezoning coming down the pipe next month, anything else?
No, sir, you'll have chapter six revisions, you'll have the rezoning for the tabled item from tonight, you'll also have the WF Morgan seafood rezoning request.
Okay.
I do not have anything else on the table at this time. Talked to a few folks about a few things, but those are the things that are definitely on the table right now that need to be dealt with, one way or the other.
Thank you so much, Brian. Everybody good? Okay. Thanks, everyone.